We'll call the meeting to order. I'm just going to ask for a response when I, when I read our, our roll call. Bob, present. Brenda? I see Brenda. Anna? Katie? Bill?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Anna, can you hear? Brenda? You don't have any audio, Brenda. Okay. Let's start. I know you're here and I know you can hear us, so we'll start.
I'll fix it.
There you are. Yep, I got you now.
Oh, you can hear now?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Well, now say the pledge of allegiance. Well, you, you've all seen the agenda. And do we have any additions?
Jeff? One addition, if we could add under item number 10, the, we want to add the secretary in office support personnel to the 622 approval. So in that item, we should add the secretaries and office support staff for settlement as well.
Okay, it, it's included under 10 then, so we're just expanding what 10 is and not adding an agenda item.
Right. We will add them to that group with the same percentages as well.
Okay. Anyone else have anything else to add to the agenda? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown with the amendment. Tim added? Jeff added? Excuse me.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
Katie?
Yeah.
Motion. Second?
I'll second.
Is that Larry?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion to second. Any other discussion on the approval of the agenda?
Hey, Bob, just a second. Anna popped out and she popped back in. I don't know if she can hear us now.
Yeah, I can hear, I can hear you now. We're having some internet issues, so.
Anna, we've got a motion to second to approve the agenda as shown, with the only addition being that item that Jeff added, which is onto number 10. It just expands the, the information we have on item number 10. Okay, I'm looking for a motion. We got a second. No other discussion. We'll approve the agenda. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes by a six-zero vote. Schedule presenters. Reed Olson will give us a presentation, a video presentation, and then we'll ask for a resolution for the continuance of the Minnesota State High School League. That'll be a resolution, of course. So Reed, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to visit with all of you tonight. Just a quick talk here about education-based athletics and why we play. And I just want to give you a couple precursors here before we watch this video as part of the resolution process. So education-based athletics is really, extends past the extension of the classroom and really as an addition of the classroom. How I always kind of described it in the past, it's, it's, it's affiliation, a program that the high school league adopted for that, maybe that lower-level junior high coach that feels like they're coaching in the final four. They don't really understand big picture. They don't understand that, especially at that level, it's about teaching and developing fundamental skills and having a, teaching a better understanding of the game, not running some set play, trick play to win by any kind of a huge margin there at that lower level. It also has to do with another growing problem that you see in our school-wide districts here is not many of our teachers coach anymore. So oftentimes, when you bring coaches in from the community or surrounding communities, they don't understand education-based athletics. They don't understand big pictures. So what we're looking at here and some, some numbers that you're, and some stats that you're going to hear in this video is less than 3% of our students go on to play collegiately, and less 1% of our student athletes have a professional career, meaning 97% of our students have that terminal end of their career here in education-based athletics. So with that being said, what are we doing as a department, as coaches, to provide our kids opportunities and understand perseverance and being part of a group and fitting in with the team? So it's about, it's about that growth. And it's certainly purpose versus goal is something that we talk about a lot that I do with coaches. And obviously, you know, our goal is to win. We all want to compete. We all want to win. But our purpose is that development, that human growth development of understanding bigger picture. And I would say in the last five to 10 years where perseverance is a quality that not necessarily all the students that I've been affiliated with is something that they have latched on to or that they've ever really had any type of a deeper meaning of. And so when you start looking at our coaches having to develop a purpose statement, and that's something that, that they have to do at the beginning as soon as they affiliate with our school, and I can read you my purpose statement now. And this is something that we always have the ability to, upon reflection, make edits. And this one is a few years old, probably, I think, three years old for me. Regardless of what role I'm serving, it is vital to show respect for others at all times. Perseverance and resiliency with the next play attitude are characteristics I want to pass on to student athletes so they may have the opportunity for positive experience. Serving others provides us an opportunity to learn and grow both independently and also within our program and communities. So that's something that I really try to strive for, and we want to make sure that our kids are having those positive experiences. And getting to the point where it's not about the coaches and their win-loss record, it's, it's more about those kids probably having better memories of that bus ride to and from the game versus really whatever happened during that game. Okay? So why we play is, again, initiative the high school league adopted several years ago. I'm thankful that they have updated the video, so this is video number two. Most likely, you would have watched the same video last year, so I apologize for the repeat there. But why we play is basically embedded with four questions, and these are four questions that I use in both the hiring and the evaluation process. And those four questions are: why do I coach? Why do I coach the way I do? How does it feel to be coached by me? And how do I define success? So those are really four enduring qualities of that transformational coach that we are looking for. Okay? If we don't have any quick questions, we can go ahead and proceed to that video. Certainly, we can talk more after the video as well, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
All right.
All right, I'll fire it up.
Thank you.
By the time students reach middle school, their families have already spent an incredible amount of time, energy, and resources on their child sports experiences.
Private coaches, tryouts, travel tournaments, and increasing pressure to specialize in a single sport at nearly age.
The reality is less than 3% of our athletes will ever go on to play college, and less than 1% of our athletes will ever play professionally.
This means 97% of students will have a terminal experience. When they graduate, their competitive playing days are over. So what's the purpose?
The purpose is the human growth and development of our students and connecting them to caring adults in their learning community.
For this to happen, it takes leadership and a community aligned around this purpose.
The purpose of a caring adult in students' lives has never been more important. Students face an incredible amount of pressure. There's peer pressure, social pressure, and academic pressure, and pressure to perform on the playing field or in the arts area. And what that's resulting in is a mental health crisis, where kids are facing anxiety and depression. There's a study called Hardwired to Connect that identifies three fundamental needs that every human being has. The need to belong, the need to have some type of moral development. And we define moral as relationships to other people. And then that base community, which is really being held accountable to a set of expectations and boundaries. Athletic and activity programs can really provide a caring community for students. It's a place for them to be connected. It takes leadership to intentionally create connections and to create a culture that supports students in a caring community.
My purpose statement is to coach, to create a love of the game, and foster community and growth among our student athletes.
The AD is the front-facing public person that's really leading the charge for all of the things that happen within that program that, again, are so beneficial to the student.
A strong activities director or athletic director is going to have the pulse of their school, is going to influence and impact the students through others, and create that experience that we're looking for for all kids.
In my particular role as the activities director, I call it leading from the middle out. I need to work with my principal and my superintendent, and I need to work with my school board to understand what purpose-based activities are, what they look like, what they should feel like with our student athletes. And then I need to train coaches, work with athletes, work with our student body.
The value of a, of a strong activities director for the entire system is something that I can't put a price tag on. We've got three brand-new board members. And it's important for school board members to understand the purpose of our activities and athletic programs so that they remember their role in supporting our work and supporting our staff and in supporting our activities director in what he does.
We are really here to change the arc of every athlete's life. I think the most important thing I do is connect students to each other, connect students to the school day, connect students to meaningful adults.
We want to win a state tournament. We want to have a winning record. But what's most important than that is having a winning culture.
It's all about the student experience, and that doesn't necessarily equate to winning. But that, that equates to being able to walk away saying, I had fun, I got better, I did the best that I could, I want to continue, I know more about myself, and I'm more prepared for whatever might come my way in the future.
We have to align our communities in order for athletic administrators and coaches to be supported.
Our school board knows that we're about more than just wins and losses, that we're part of the educational program and part of the educational system. It's great to be able to show up at work every day, knowing that you're supported by your school board, your superintendent, and your principal, and that you have the ability to support your coaches, athletes, participants, and their families. It's very important that you have all of those important stakeholders in alignment, and that they understand what the common language is and what it means to have a successful experience.
My purpose as a captain is to use the sport of baseball to help teach life lessons that'll help, help people down the road.
The adults are purposeful and deliberate about engaging with students about something bigger than themselves. I may do it in my social studies classroom by teaching history, and I may then later do it in my role as a softball coach. But the experience that the kids get, that alignment that is tied through, is that we are here to impact your life in a positive way.
There's no more rewarding feeling for me as an activities director to hear them say that they became a better person through their participation in our activities.
I think the greatest thing that a school board can do is to define success, to publicly state that here's how we are going to define success within our school community. Are we growing and developing better people? Are we modeling the kind of character that we want our students to leave our school communities with and go into the world with? Awareness is critical. We have to be aware of the purpose of why sports are a part of our school community. And finally, not only do we have to hold our coaches accountable, we have to hold our school communities accountable to the transformative power of what sport can be, and that is connecting students to caring adults in their learning community.
Okay. Thank you. Reed?
Any questions? Anything else you'd like me to comment on? Certainly, I guess I could give you one precursor of I haven't met all of our head coaches and advisors yet. One thing that I have routinely heard and repeatedly heard is what a quality culture that we have here at Cannon Falls, and the same is to be echoed in regards to our coaches. But until I'm able to really develop and foster those relationships and really do any observing, that part will be difficult. But certainly, these are going to be the expectations. The education-based, the purpose-based athletics, and impacting our kids in a positive way, that's the expectation.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Reed and on the video first? Okay. We need a resolution to be, to, for our continuance in the high school league. So I would be looking for a motion to continue our membership with the Minnesota State High School League for the upcoming year. Go move, Bob. Who'd we get? Bill? Anna, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thinking Katie. We got a motion to second on the floor. Any other discussion? So this is a resolution, so when
Ready?
After Katie gets finished, we'll, a yes vote would be for the continuance with our membership. Yep, we're ready.
MS HSL Resolution for Membership, resolved that the governing board of the school district number 252, county of Goodhue, state of Minnesota delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine arts events to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies the state commissioner of education as provided by the Minnesota statutes. Further resolved that the high school listed below, Cannon Falls High School, is authorized by this, the governing board of said school, district, or school to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and participate in the approved inter-school activities sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. So as far as vote, Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie, yes. Bill?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six-zero vote. Thank you, Katie. Thank you for the presentation, Reed.
Thank you. One last thing here before I let you guys move on. In future years, if you're receptive to this, I'd like to bring in maybe two or three coaches every year and just have them read their purpose statements to you guys as well, just as part of this resolution process.
I think that would be
That sounds great.
Yeah, maybe good.
Yeah, I'd probably start with head coaches, see if we can't get a few in, and, and just kind of revolve every year.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving down to reports and communication. We do not have a school board rep at this time. And unless anybody has any committee reports, we'll drop down a notch. Okay, moving down to administrative board reports. Elementary school. Jen, have anything for us?
Um, no, I do not. Just currently in the process of looking at guidance for fall. So aside from that, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
Same for me.
Okay. Tech, we don't have a tech liaison. Community ed and activities department, Reed gave his report already, I think. Did you have anything else for us, Reed?
Uh, only the, we spent the good part of time here, after and I have spent our time on the facility scheduler, and we've had some training to clean some of that part up and make some things much more efficient. So one thing that I've heard a few times repeatedly is that in the years past, you guys have asked for some reports on rental usage and revenue, so I hope to be able to provide those for you here in the upcoming future.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for Reed? Okay. Head of operations and maintenance, is Dave in?
I did not see Dave join us tonight.
Okay.
In full steam ahead mode here.
Superintendent's report. Jeff?
Thank you. I just want to give you an update on some of the CARES Act dollars that we will be applying for here when the application opens up at the end of the month. Cannon Falls has been designated to receive some dollars through the CARES Act and through GEAR, which is the state dollars. The CARES Act dollars will be used currently to backfill our Fund IV and Fund II losses that we had since the middle of March up through the end of the school year. And we're still be coming up a little short on the dollars that we were given from the federal bill. And so moving forward, we, we are almost backfilled, I guess, but not quite. The GEAR money can be used for technology, and so the plan as of right now is to help us in our technology equipment department to make sure that we are prepared in case we do go back into distance learning for this coming year, or if we're in some sort of a hybrid model, which is a definite possibility as well. And so once we get a better handle on that, we will, we can certainly report as we move forward on that. But as of right now, that is kind of where we are looking at using those dollars that we're getting coming in. The facility opening plan, each school, as required by the governor, had to have a plan in place and publicized, and ours is on our website currently. For us to go back to participating, using our buildings for youth sports and athletics. The funny thing is, once we got it implemented, the governor changed it last Friday, and so it is an ever-evolving document as we have it online, but those set up the expectations for people that want to use our facility and outlines a plan that they need to have also for us as to how they are going to meet those expectations. And as I mentioned before, that will be updated. The third thing, MDE and the fall decision timeline, as most of you know, MD has released some guidance that the principals and I are going to be meeting about tomorrow after we've taken a chance to read all 116 pages of that guidance into pilfering that into, I guess, a, a document with three broad-ranging plans for what the fall could look like. And then during the week of July 27th, the governor is supposed to let us know the direction that we are going to be heading in, whether it's back in school full-time, hybrid model, or still in distance learning, are the three options that have been laid out for us to consider. The final thing here is an LTFM planning document, which I've linked in my report, but I didn't, I don't think I pulled it up, actually. So I will go to it. Basically, I just want to share this with the board. As I've gone through this year, and we started looking at projects that we can use LTFM dollars for, I had Josh put together a capital document and also an LTFM document. So we do get LTFM dollars each year from the state to use on our long-term facilities, maintenance, and health and safety. And we also get capital dollars. And as you can see, we laid out this document that shows the revenue coming in and the planned expenditures that we have moving forward to make sure that we are staying within the designated budget each year for both the LTFM and capital dollars. As you will see, the technology device leases and our bus leases chew up all of our capital dollars, and actually, we go a little bit into the hole on those, and so that money comes out of the undesignated fund each year. The LTFM dollars can only be used for deferred maintenance items and also for health and safety items. The district may bond against those as for a board approval if we have a project that qualifies for that, mainly HVAC and fire suppression type of projects would qualify for anything above over $100,000 if the board wished to go that route. So anyway, I just wanted to show you this document. Moving forward, we are planning on using this as we continue on into this fiscal year, and it'll be a sharper look next year once we get a better handle on where we are at with those budgets currently. Any questions about that? That's my report, I guess. Any questions?
Nothing? Okay. Move on to public input, I believe, on if anyone has any. We got some.
Up there, up there. Get up there. They don't.
Okay. Public input. Due to data district employee during public input. Anyone have anything for the school board that they would like to discuss under public input? Okay, moving on. Consideration to approve the finance report. Josh, would you like to start us out?
Yeah. So just kind of piggyback, piggyback a little bit on the information Mr. Sampson said about two items there. The GEAR and ESSER funds, which are part of the CARES Act and helping to backfill some of the COVID expenses of not being in school, still having to provide items like food service and daycare without a cost to our district is going to mean about $126,000. And you'll see as we get into later on in the presentations about revised budget for fiscal year 20, I've included that information there, and we'll discuss that a little bit further detail. But just so you know that the school's grant award, when we're able to apply for that, will open up. Their intent for MDE is to have it all set before July 1st, so we can start drawing funds, is about $126,000 to Cannon Falls Schools District. The other thing about the planning guide for the LTFM and the capital, there's been an exhaustive list of items put together by admin of kind of identifying projects that are upcoming that are due or maybe need some attention and some estimated costs into it. And we kind of sit and look at what is our priorities and where can we fill this in and being put into our capital outlay and our LTFM budgets. And it's an excellent planning tool for us, and it really sheds some light on some things that not necessarily we're doing incorrectly, but helps us plan and guide a little bit better towards just how we can spend some of those dollars. And as Mr. Sampson pointed out, and the, or the capital outlay portion, with our leasing of buses and, and technology, currently because of the obligations we already have in place for LTFM with that $11.3 million project we did a couple years ago, we really are, we're spending that operating capital portion, which means that that's a hit toward general fund. So it's a good planning tool for us to kind of keep an eye on that and just what effect different items will have that we approve for our district. LTFM likewise, the district gets about $600,000 in LTFM funds, but a large significant portion of that is already set for debt service to pay on. And again, that $11.3 million project we did for basically indoor air quality and some health and safety issues. So it's an excellent planning tool for us to use. We've been using it since mid-year, trying to put things together and it, it fine-tuned. And I think as we go forward, it'll be even a better tool for us to plan and for the board as well to use in decision-making for the district.
And really it ends up tying out into the overall bigger plan of, you know, fund balance policy and where we want to go and head for both undesigned and reserved fund balances. So excellent tool to start using and start planning for. In terms of financial report, you're only going to see it through the end of the fiscal year, which is, you know, the end of next week with the cash flow statement. But I have got that in our office now working on the next fiscal year. The assumptions that I'm making right now would entail the state staying at a 90-10 funding mechanism. If that were to change, which would just be, you know, I guess cautious thinking on our part right now. As it had happened in the past, when the state ran into a shortfall, education funding tends to be the one that they can change and move around a little bit. Currently, we get 100% of our funds because we get 90% of the current year, 10% of the prior year to equal that 100%. We have gone as far down as 60-40. If that were to happen, that's 30% of our state revenue not coming in in cash flow. It'll still open fund balance and we have to account for that. And we will get those funds eventually. But it does lead to some issues of making payroll and monthly bills go out. So if that were to change, and again, that's just us being a little bit precautious and understanding that that is a potential. Well, I'm building the cash flow right now based on a 90-10. If in that, in that position, we're not doing cash flow borrowing. If the state were to change that funding mechanism, or if we were to go into extended distance learning again in the fall, there's some potential. We have to look at some cash flow items. The other key thing to note, and it's not listed out here as a detail item because we've already received the funds, but we talked at last meeting about the possibility of the county not receiving the full county funds for our property taxes the first half. And we actually did a really nice job of collecting. We got just under $1.9 million of what our estimated, just a little over $2 million levy was for the first half. So we did a good job collecting our tax receipts. And that's why you'll see our cash flow is a very positive balance for right now. The other part I put in here, we tried to do this a couple of times during the year is just kind of where are we at year to date in terms of what our budget is and what we've actually brought in. You see, we're getting really close to the end of the year. In terms of, you know, number of days, we're nearly done. You'd think almost 100%. But in terms of how we receive our revenue, we're not quite there yet. In terms of general fund, again, think of that 90-10, we're going to get a large chunk of our current year revenue next year. And in terms of accounting, we have to allocate that differently. We also have budgeted now the CARES funding, the $126,000. So that's yet to be received. Even though we won't receive that, those funds until after July 1, it is a fiscal year 20 revenue. So that's included in that amount. Most of these numbers you should see in that 90 to 95%. The reason that you're not going to see maybe food service or community ed quite getting there is some of the hits that they've had to take because of the distance learning that we've had to do in the covering of some, some daycare issues. So when we get to the revised budget tonight, we'll talk a little more about those items. The other thing in terms of expenditures, why that's not at 100% yet and why it looked like we're doing even better than we maybe is we've still got contracts that pay out for the fiscal year in July and August. Mainly would be the teachers who received their contract running through the payments on July 15, July 30th and August 15th. And that's all recognized in this fiscal year. So as those funds come due, that fills in that year to date expenditures closer to 100%. Also, our hourly salary people will get a paycheck on July 15th that is booked into the other fiscal year. So that's why that's not at the 100%, even though we're already at only, you know, eight days left in fiscal year. If you have any questions on that, the main part I've been doing in the last few weeks is working on budget stuff. So but if you have any questions on this part of your report, I can certainly do my best to answer what you have.
Josh, it's Bill. Question on the potential of the short term borrowing if the state does change their funding. Would we use resource, community resource as our bank? Because that's where we're banking now, or would we open it up to all of the banks and, or is it dependent upon the size?
I think whenever we, whenever we do it, we usually go through, Ailer's has a nice tool for us to kind of estimate where potential high point may be. In the past, we've used our local banks just as a matter of their local banks who do a lot for the school district, the rates that we receive on anticipation borrowing is pretty low. So if we can keep business in town, we've tried to. There are organizations set up through MDE and the state that offer short term financing as well, which we certainly can look at. I think it really is going to come down to a matter of just how much cash are going to need to borrow for how long and what kind of rates you're looking at to whether we were to stay. And typically, our local banks have been pretty competitive on that short term borrowing for us. So that's kind of where we've gone. We haven't had to do anticipation borrowing for quite a number of years now. But we would definitely be open and willing and open to looking at going outside as well. We're not, so I guess the short answer to that is we're not tied to having to go through community resource if, if we need to do anticipation borrowing.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Josh and the finance report? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve it.
I'll move to approve.
Bill on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Larry. Other discussion. So roll call vote would, a yes would be for the approval of the finance report. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna? Anna?
She's on mute.
That was a yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes.
Brenda, yes. That was Ken.
All right, we're jumping all over. So we got a unanimous, Anna, you heard that you, you voiced a yes, correct? Okay. Okay, consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any particular item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Jeff, you usually like to have some recognition about gifts, but we do have a lot of them there.
Yes, we do. For the resolution for the consent agenda, we do have a $100 gift from David and Linda Nelson for student meals. $1,500 from Silicon Valley Foundation for Bombbots, the robotics team. $275 from the CF Foundation or Education Foundation for Internet Hotspots for Students. The life choice of Cannon Falls from Ace Hardware and Bayer for packets of seeds for students to plant. And $15,985 from various listed in this attachment here from We the People, and I can open that up here real quick as well. To show the We the People donation that we had had from, from this year from the VFW Auxiliary, Stewartville American Legion Post, Ginther and Aileen Moseller, Dalkin Applied, Dennis and Darlene Kallo, Earl C. Hill, Bloomington American Legion Post, First English Lutheran Church Foundation, Mr. and Mrs. James Nelson, Spring Garden Lutheran Church, Richard or Jane Peterson, Freeman Madsen VFW Post, Cannon Falls Fire Department Relief Association, Patricia or Thomas Moore, the American Legion Post 249, Nisswa American Legion, Eugene or Judith Kimmis, Sarah Minder, Ken or Marilyn Ebert, Post 222 American Legion, American Legion Post 443, Nancy Castleton, Carol Olson, Cannon Eye Clinic, Bruce or Mavis Johnson, Lorenz Incorporated, Lindahl Tire and Auto Service, Gemini Incorporated, Ken and Crystal Burns, Jim and Mary Basset, Jennifer Bloom, Robin Flint, Robert and Anita Cook, Freeburg Insurance Agency, Nelson Insurance Agency, Vasa Spring Garden Mutual, Ron and Pat Reinardi, Cannon Falls Lions Club, Jim Burkhart, Attorney at Law, VFW Post 4452, DK and CH Molinar, SL and JJ Van Gilder, Charles and Mavis Swartzoff, Cliff and Karen Adele, Bill and Nancy Althoff, Naughty Pines Resorts, Church of St. Pius V, Hagerty Insurance, Edward Jones, American Legion 142 Kraft Ostrom, Animal Health Center, First English Church, Dakota Electric, Kennedy Law Offices, Lyle and Jerry Noble, Justin and Cheryl Bauer, the CF Rotary Foundation, Worker Realtors, Carnell and Company, Cannon Rivers Catering Company. Thank you for all of your donations toward this program.
It's incredible.
It is.
It always is. It's fascinating. Please just take a moment to review the minutes from the May 18th and see if you have any questions or concerns about them. And otherwise, we had just one personnel item as far as I can see, and take a look at the bills as well if you'd like. We'll, we'll just take a very brief pause here. When you're ready to confirm the consent agenda, I would look for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, was that you, Anna?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Second it with Katie?
Yep.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Everybody had a good shot at it? A yes vote would be the approval of the consent agenda. Bob? Yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Old Business. Consideration to approve an advisor to complete a community survey. Last time we met, there was some discussion about at least getting bids or proposals from a secondary source. We have used school perceptions in the past on a, on a local level for our needs. But we do have a second bid on here. Jeff, it's yours.
I was able to secure a bid from Baker Tilly for a school survey. They have two different kinds of surveys. They have a random sample scientific survey, which is done through phone calling. And the price is listed down here. For the random sample survey, it is $18,185. And for the other type of survey that they offer, which is done through Survey Monkey, is $8,995. And so I went to a couple of different areas looking for bids and either they didn't do schools or they weren't willing to bid this. And so Baker Tilly and School Perceptions are usually the two big names within Minnesota doing school surveys.
Dealing with all of these, was there a, was there a hard and fast number from School Perceptions or is it kind of an à la carte thing?
There is an à la carte piece to theirs. I'm trying to find where theirs was.
At the end.
I think it was down here. Yes. There we go. So they have different phases to theirs. They have the development and survey design, and then the survey administration piece. And then the online results access, written reports, plan of action. I would say if that isn't, you know, if we, if we just want the results given to us by Sue Peterson from School Perception, she would do that along with the electronic version of that. And then there's some additional services here for site visits and obviously the mailing piece to that as well.
What, there seems to be so many avenues we can take within School Perceptions, for example. We go about moving forward or making a recommendation to move forward on this if we choose School Perceptions?
How do we go about moving forward?
Well, do we just say, yes, we'll take phase one, two, and three? Or I just am a little confused by it, I guess.
Sure. Well, basically, it's, it's the development of the survey. I've worked with them in the past, and I think Cannon Falls has as well. Where they work with a group of stakeholders to, to develop the questions and wanting to know what we want to know from the community. And then they work on getting that survey out to the people, which is a combination of mailing and actually online versions as well. And then the third phase, when I've dealt with Sue, and I'm not sure what she did with you guys in the past, but she was on a phone conference and we did a webinar, I guess, breakdown during a board meeting of what the results were and kind of a plan of action after that. Which really, depending on what the board has in mind for the use of the documentation after this, I think that action, plan of action would probably be developed more by board members and administrators moving forward using that data and what that tells us.
Other questions?
Do we have a sorry?
No, go ahead.
Do we have an estimated number of how many surveys we think we're going to send out because we have to pay extra for printing and postage? And it doesn't say what that costs. And bring overall price up pretty significantly.
Right. The, the cost of the survey, they, they send out one survey per household in the district. And I think it was either Josh or Lori that had a number from last time that they used. Are both of them still there?
Yeah. Do you remember anything?
Yeah, I think it was just under 10,000 total for school, school perceptions I paid last time we went out. That would encompass their fee as well as any postage as we, I think we reimbursed them for the cost of the postage.
Yeah. I remember it being around that $9,000 to $10,000 range for this survey. From our last discussion, anyway.
You know, when I, when I look at the, the second bid we have, I think they're, they're going to be within 6%, I think was the number.
For accuracy?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that was hold up. They, they talked about the, the accuracy that they have. And as you read through this, their statistical accuracy was in the, the average difference from the estimate was 6.8%. Using various statistical tools. I know, and I don't know what Cannon Falls experience was with School Perceptions last time, but I know when I had used them, they were, were within actually 1% on both sides of the percentage that they predicted. And in talking to other area superintendents, they had the same exact outcome using School Perceptions. They were that close and that accurate in what they did.
I think we, you count us in that group. We're between 1 and 2% as I recall.
Yeah, they're, they're very good at what they do.
Are we, are we using this survey to help guide us for measures or is this to get community insight?
I envision this being used for community insight into kind of big picture things of how are we doing? What can we do to improve? If we want to test tax tolerance for either an operating levy or even a bond, if we have any questions about that, I think it's good to get those questions out. And I think that's part of the discussions that we need to have. There seems to be some outstanding questions here from when I'm started about what do we think the community is thinking? And I think it's a good time to get those answers right now so that we can use this and apply it with our strategic plan moving forward.
Do we have any references for Baker Tilly? Or have we talked to any other schools that have used them as far as what their experience was like? Or have we ta- talked to any other schools that have used them as far as what their experience was like?
Um, I have. Um, the, the people that I've used both have recommended School Perceptions. I guess it's about as far as I want to
Okay.
get into that.
And then the other thing is, do we want to have a mail out kind of survey? Or, because it, Baker Tilly is all random phone calls or online surveys, so. Personally, I think the, the mailed survey might get a better response than phone calls or all online, because not everybody's going to complete an online survey or have access to them.
Also, we kind of have to know our audience. And, uh, in a, in a smaller community, maybe even with a, um, an older community that may not have the, the online either access or the experience to take those types of surveys. We'd probably get a better result with some form of mailing out anyway. Obviously, the phone call survey is more expensive.
Yeah.
And again, whether people are going to be, I, I, I guess I don't know how people would react to a phone call survey, whether, whether they would willingly take part if we advertise it or not. That's hard to say. The online survey, a- again, it's, it's people's access to technology and their willingness to, to use it and know how to use it, I guess. It's simple for some people, but it may be a little scary for others.
Anyone else?
Is this, um, something we could, I mean, just with the cost of it and everything, I'm just wondering if this year is the right year for us to do it? Or if we should wait a year? I mean, what's the, do we have, are we on a rush schedule to get this information?
Um, well, it, it takes a while to get the information, because we wouldn't be sending out the survey until October.
So when do you get results? If you, if you sent it out in October, when would you expect to get your results for it?
They had a timeline here that is kind of off kilter now because of, um, where we're looking at. But so if we, so originally, we were supposed to survey the draft or the survey draft to the district. And then we were going to look at getting all feedback back to School Perceptions and finalize the survey in August 26th and send it out in September and then get the results back late October. And so we're probably looking at late November now, I would guess, since we're about a month behind this right now approximately.
I guess what I'm thinking is just that with all the extra COVID things and everything coming out right now, if this is the right time to do it, um, I don't know. That's just my concern that we're spending money that we might not get the, um, the most accurate results with everything that went on with distance learning and, and everything like that. Um, I don't know. It's ju- that's just my concern over it, that maybe we're not at the right place for it, so.
I, I am kind of on the same page as Katie. I think it seems to me that the, the benefit of using someone like School Per- will present very specific that we're trying to get information. Are going to do a rep, having to help out our potential is with that. I think if our ultimate goal with this one is to gather information, that's basically something we could do in-house for a lot less. And we could have a little bit more control over the timeline, um, because I, I agree that I think our results, even in October, depending on what our situation is at the time, our results are going to be skewed.
I'm not sure I would agree with doing it in-house. I don't know if we have the, the people to do it, the resources to do it. We certainly got people's information, I guess, but this is what they do. And we've, uh, reached out in the past and we've talked around the table about, um, getting public input. And I think that we're taxing our, our, uh, staff if the public input comes from them and not from an independent source. And, uh, uh, I guess the, uh, Katie's thing about, uh, money, I guess we'd have to defer to, uh, our superintendent to see if this is something that he would endorse doing right now, and if the money would be available to do that. So I, I, I think that, uh, either we, we can it in its entirety, or we, we move forward with the understanding that, yeah, we have asked and we have said we wanted to plug into the community a little bit more. And sometimes that isn't done, um, by other political entities in our community. So it's probably good if we stay close to our people.
I agree in doing the survey. I just, I'm wondering if we can potentially push this off to next fall, or if it's a necessary thing to have done right now. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and I get that. I, I just, if, uh, if we do delay it, then between now and when we do get it started, we certainly can't discuss, um, how the public feels about certain topics, because we, I guess we, we're foregoing that option. And that's okay, you know, um, we'll do, we'll do well without this. But it gives us an idea what, how the community feels about us and the direction we're going.
And that was a big part of our strategic plan, was to partner with the community and the businesses and, and, uh, have that kind of partnership with the community.
But isn't there a different way to partner than survey? I mean, I just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to be as, you know, if we're, we're really striving, part of our, you know, our strategic plan was the fiscal responsibility too. And I just want to make sure that we're using the right, um, funds and, and everything in the right moment, when we are kind of uncertain as to what our fall is going to look like. Um, I don't know. It just, it sets me a little bit more uneasy than, than, than else, so that's all I'm saying, so.
Right. I, I guess I can't speak to what the, the district's experience has been, but professionally, I've used outside consultants to do surveys, and I've done surveys in-house. And I really don't see a big difference in the responses that we get. Um, but again, I don't know what the experience has been in the past. We do have another, a number of surveys on our strategic plan. This is the only one that we were looking to hire an outside agency to help us with. So I'm not sure how.
It might be the biggest survey we do.
Or what we're, we're looking to get from those other surveys. If it was okay to go.
Anyone else?
Well, just chime in here. Uh, I, I think the survey idea was going back to this, this strategic plan, and, and I think they were tied one, one to the other. Uh, I, I understand, Katie, your concern of, of, from a financial standpoint, because we do have to understand where we're spending our dollars. Uh, I think a professional firm is going to word those questions in a way that hopefully take away from some of the COVID and the distance learning issues that, uh, you might easily have responses on if they're not worded correctly. Uh, so I, I, I share some of that concern, and I, and I think that's where we have to share that with the professionals. I can't say for myself that I would feel comfortable creating these questions internally. So that's my two cents.
So at this point in time, we have School Perceptions and Baker Tilly, which with, which have both given us bids, um, on a community survey. And so we need to make a motion to either choose one of the two or move forward without doing anything. So I would look for a motion to, to do something here, folks.
Well, I have one more question, I guess, for Jeff. I mean, do we have the resources? We don't have a market research department. Um, how would we even, um,
I, my concern-
draft a survey like this internally? Who would do it?
Well, one, we don't have the staffing to, to do that. Two, creating, um, reliable data type questions. And there's a scientific process that goes into that. And if you, if you throw it against the wind and say, well, we can ask this question or that question, I, there is a process for doing this, and they, and there's a reason why they come up statistically, um, good all the time. I guess no matter what company y- you look at. Um, I've been in districts over the years that have gone, you know, different routes. And there's been arguments about why are we not using a professional firm? Because the, the data is not going to be reliable that you get back from it. And so there is something for that. And if you put time and energy into something that you're not going to get reliable data out of, then why did we do it, I guess? And really, um, i- if we're not looking at getting feedback, I guess the question that I would have for the board would be, w- where do we go from here with our strategic plan? Do we put that off for a year because of COVID? Because I plan on, um, a- at least bringing in, um, some long-term facility planning companies to talk to our facilities committee coming up in the next couple of months. And hopefully have a recommendation to go for this fall to start looking at long-term facility planning. And so if, you know, if we put this off, in really, a lot of the results can be used with that facility planning and vice versa, because they will use this survey as well for input into how to make our facilities better, or what, what people like about our facilities. And so if we do that, if we, if we delay some of this, I guess the question is, are we going to delay more of our big parts of our strategic plan moving forward for now?
And that's all I needed to hear. So the, I mean, I, I just needed to know if like, um, i- if it was at all a possibility to, like, if that's going to cause a domino effect, then of course I would be in supportive if we have the money to do it.
A domino effect important, and I, and Anna cut out on my end. I'm not sure if everybody heard Anna or not, but from what I gathered.
My connection is bad. I'm missing a lot of the conversation.
Well, from what I gathered from Anna's conversation, um, and I kind of lost my train of thought here. But a lot of this stuff is tied in together. And, um, I, I'd rather have good data, especially, and I think Bill mentioned it, this is our one big survey that we need to get reliable data from, because it drives a lot of what we would do from here. And the, 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 you know, School Perceptions does do other surveys, um, whether it's for staff or for students or parents. We can certainly entertain that if you want to moving forward. Um, but I think this is the one that's going to drive a lot of what we do, big picture wise, moving forward. Because you get, you get the parent, you know, not only the parent input, but you also get the non-parent input of people still in your community that you was a part of.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's important, as, as, as Jeff mentioned, that, you know, if we put it off, we've already made timeline adjustments to the strategic plan. And Anna, you, you put a lot of effort into, you know, kind of where we are with that. And so if we did put it off, we're kind of putting the whole thing on the shelf again. And, and that's not really our intention.
Well, I, I think-
A lot of effort already behind.
I think getting the information is critical. It's, it's incredibly important. I'm not sure that I necessarily agree with the arguments against, beyond not having the people, the arguments against doing it in-house as far as accurate data. We haven't done a community survey in years. Um, I think the fact that we're asking our community to give us feedback, wherever it's coming from, um, is going to be valuable. And there are always going to be people that are going to say that your questions aren't statistically accurate and what have you. Um, and as far as crafting the questions, that's what I do for a job. But I'm happy to help guide the process, um, and I won't charge a consulting fee. But if we think that it's better to have it come from, I, I just, I have concerns about spending money on this. I think it's va- valuable and necessary. But there's going to be other things that are valuable and necessary coming down the road in the next couple of months. And when, when we don't know for sure what things are going to look like this fall, it's, it's a, it's a concern to spend money on something that's not and not a tangible, immediate need.
I think one of the things also that I, I should have mentioned when I was talking earlier is there's a trust factor also when you're, when you're sending out a survey. You know, if the survey's coming back to the school district, people are always going to wonder who's manipulating the data behind the scenes. Uh, this is an independent company that actually people would mail that information back to. And the surveys that are sent out electronically as well would go back to that company. And we don't see the data until the presentation. And so that, that hopefully would solve some of those trust issues as well that may pop up.
I think we need to move forward on this, and one of them would, uh, one of the concerns would be, do we even have a survey? And the other one would be, who's it going to be? So I would entertain a motion for something.
I'd make a motion to move forward with School Perceptions, with their proposal and with the adjusted timeline. So that we can keep our, um, strategic plan on track and get the feedback that we want to get from the community.
Motion by Brenda, is there a second to School Perceptions being the, uh, the entity that's going to do our survey?
I'll second it for School Perceptions.
Bill?
Yes.
Other discussion. Roll call vote, a yes vote would be for School Perceptions to do our community survey. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
No.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. That passes by a five-one vote for the conversation on it. Good talk. Moving down, consideration to approve C or M R E A proposal. We have two informational pack, things in our packet for it. Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, we were looking for more information, uh, most likely from C, because M R E A provided a lot of information last time. And in the packet, you will see, um, more information from C. And, and talking to schools, um, that have used both of them, they've had good things to say about both, uh, entities. And so really, it's a matter of choice and what you want to go with. If you're happy with C, we can certainly stick with C. Um, I only got one of the schools that I talked to, I got one recommendation on who they would go one over the other. And that's if they were, you know, having their teeth pulled out and as the other option, uh, they would go with C at this point, so.
They, they do approximately the same thing for districts, correct?
Yeah, and, and really, the, the information that you get or where their values are put at are really within their titles. Uh, with C, it's the Schools for Equity and Education. Um, they do a lot with equity, both in, in, uh, funding and other type of areas. And they, they both, they have a, a lot of the, the metro districts and then some rural districts as well. And the Minnesota Rural Education Association is basically that. It's a lot of, uh, help at the, at the capital for the, the rural school districts in a lot of different areas.
With your pleasure.
I'll make the motion to stick with C.
That was Bill?
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second that.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brenda to continue with C as our, for lack of better, our lobbying group. Other discussion. Okay, yes vote would mean to approve C. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six-zero vote. New business: Consideration to Approve a Leave of Absence under Article 10, Section 12 of our Teacher-Master Agreement through 22, 23. Jeff?
Uh, this is for Sue Samuelson, and I recommend approval.
Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Katie? On the motion, Anna on the second. Other discussion. Yes vote would mean approval. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry? Larry?
Yes.
That passes by a six-zero vote. Consideration to hire Marissa Flavin is 1.0 F T E Elementary Long-Term Sub for the 2021 School Year.
Yes, Marissa would be the teacher that we would recommend hiring for the position that you approved to go on long-term dub with the hiring season coming to a very quick end here. We have already posted and brought forward a recommendation for this.
Okay, motion to approve, please.
Make the motion.
Anna?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion. A yes vote would be for the approval of this contract. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. Six-zero on the approval of the Flavin contract. Consideration to approve the 2021 N S F Grant Documents.
Uh, this is a, there are two documents here, and you can approve them either separately or all in one motion, I guess. One of them is for the faculty release contract as part of this N S F grant, and then also the P S E O contract for our students, which looks similar to all of our other P S E O type contracts that we have with other Minnesota State College and University Systems. And this is through Minnesota State Southeast out of Red Wing and Winona.
Questions? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve these grant documents.
I make a motion to approve.
We're going to approve both the faculty release contract and the P S E O at the same time. Brenda, are you okay with that?
Okay.
Okay, motion by Brenda. Second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. A yes vote would be for the approval. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna? Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. That passes by a six-zero vote. Consideration to approve fiscal year 20, final revised budget. You got kind of a back at what page?
Sorry. Uh, this is the final revised budget, and I'll have Josh step in here to hit the highlights that he wishes to.
Just kind of begin with, and it's kind of a continuation of the finance report discussion about Community Service Fund and the Food Service Fund. And you'll see there projected out of, uh, excuse me, audit total in the negative balance for both food service and community. As we talked about, Mr. Sampson had brought up to the CARES funds, the hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that we'll have coming in to help offset some of the COVID-related expenses. We're going to hope to use to backfill some of that and offset some costs to help reduce those negative balances. So the currently, all the funding is put into general fund. So you'll see we're really looking at is the the difference, the difference between the revenues versus the expenditures. And the general fund for revised right now, it's at two hundred and twelve thousand dollars to the good. A hundred and twenty-six thousand of that is the Gears and Essers Funds from the CARES Act. The original budget called for us to have about a twenty-six thousand dollar to the good balance in the general fund. Even when you take out the one-twenty-six, we're looking at doing better in the general fund for fiscal year 20 than we had anticipated this time or so a year ago, we put out the preliminary budget for fiscal year 20. Some of the reasons for the expenditures going down a bit since our last revision would be fueling utilities are going to be the biggest portion of it. Having really small numbers of people in the buildings the last few months has significantly cut down on the gas utilities type bills. So we're able to reduce some of the expenditures there. And really, the the huge or the biggest increase in the revenues is going to be the funding from the governor and from feds for the COVID. Obviously, this wouldn't be exactly what the projected audit total is for general fund because we have to do some offset to clear out negative balances in food service and community ed. But this would put us roughly at a total fund balance in the general fund at about six-point-five percent. Moving the needle in the proper direction for us, but not to where the policy is. Uh, food service, a negative balance there, we would probably have been forecasted to have done okay in food service other than the last couple of months here with the COVID and and doing the meals. Although we are getting a significant portion of our expenses back during this time as we're able to qualify underneath our summer food service program. So it's nearly a hundred percent revenue recapture on that. Uh, community for service, the biggest reason for the major decline in revenue and community ed is the Canon Care or the the daycare portion of serving the needs of our community during the time of the COVID. We're still doing or providing some daycare service at the governor's order at no cost to people using it during the school year. Normally, we would see fifty to sixty thousand dollars in revenue a month come into community ed, largely based on the Canon Kids programming, both for preschool and for kindergarten. That would be nonexistent during that time. So community ed was of all the funds, really, the most hit during this time. And like I said, the largest portion of that CARES funding is going to have to go there to help shore up that offset. The remaining funds are really, you know, even though you're going to see a difference, either positive or negative, mainly negative here. The debt service, the OPEB Trust, the OPEB Trust debt service are all funds that are set up to fulfill the needs. So we've got our, for lack of better terms, our mortgage payment on our buildings in our levy set to pay that. There are adjustments made throughout the year depending on if we have collected over our amount, I have to be in terms debt excess, and the state and county will take that, those funds back and help disperse that over our tax base to help give them some relief if we have an excess. And that being because the levy is set to collect at a hundred and five percent, assuming that there's going to be some delinquent accounts. And we're fortunate in the area that we're at that we do a very good job of collecting from our constituents. The trust and agency is scholarships, a almost entirely there. There are a couple of funds we have set in there because we're able to roll this one over year to year, whereas most funds, they close out at the end of the year. But generally, ninety-five percent of this is scholarship funding. So the revenue and the expansion will be offset for the most part. There are a couple of scholarships that are set up to base on interest that is received. To be honest, the interest we receive in a in a in a year is very minimal. So you'll generally see that expenditures typically will exceed revenues. Over where we're showing revenues higher than expenditures this fiscal year is Deb Clayton did a good job of collecting scholarships that went out at the end of this fiscal year for students that graduated in two thousand twenty, whose payments will be paid out in two thousand twenty-one. So there's where the revenue is a little bit higher than the expenditure in the trust and agency for fiscal year 20. The other information is basically for your review or just in a matter of transparency to see where we were at with our initial budget on four twenty-two nineteen to where we come to our first revision, and then finally, the the final revised version. The bottom that shows budget changes, that does not take into account that middle revision on in April of twenty. But it does go from the initial that you approved in April of two thousand nineteen versus the final revised budget tonight. The big takeaway on that is the huge increase or not huge increase, but the larger increase in general fund, that hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. One-twenty-six of that is from the CARES Act or the the COVID funding. The decrease in food service largely based on and some growth fees, as well as in the community, added a large portion of the decrease on that is because of providing the childcare without having a revenue source coming in. The the debt service trust and the OPEB are just some mechanisms to help average out where we are for our levy and what our needs are. So if you want to slide back to the top there, Jeff, yeah. Why I've got those highlighted in yellow is obviously those numbers are going to change as we go through the audit process and close out negative balances for food service and community ed. Meaning that projected audit totals will change as well. But I wanted to make sure that that was transparent too, that you all saw that while tonight now and revised budget and while we've got the gears and the Essers Funds in there, some of those general fund dollars are going to have to go to help offset the food service and community ed funds. If you have any questions, this is a very melted down summary version of it, just by fun. There's a lot of information that goes into getting to this point. So if there are any questions or follow-up questions, feel free to call or email.
Any questions for Josh? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the fiscal year 20 final revised budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised budget.
Brenda on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Larry?
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? A yes vote would be approval of the revised budget. Bob? Yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna? Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Anna, I didn't get your your vote.
Okay, thank you.
That passes by a six-zero vote. Moving on, consideration to approve the fiscal year 21 preliminary budget. Josh?
Yeah, Josh, continue with this.
Yep. So this now carries over. So if we look at the final column on the upper right, the projected audit total, again, that is taken into account where we end up with the general fund after the revised twenty budgets. And in that number was at hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that will be dispersed to help offset things. So this, it will be an estimate or projection. It's not going to be exact or precise. Still, what this would call for, if you even if you were to take out the Esser and Gear Funds, a fund balance of about nine and a half percent total fund balance at the end of fiscal year 21. And the big thing to take into account to this, you'll see revenues over expenditures of about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in fiscal year 21. And and the big takeaway to that is, I think we have a process in place where we've identified where our fund balance policy is and that we were short of that, and are trying to push in a direction of improving that for the financial health of the district. And through a long process of administration meetings and going back and where we can get some reductions that maybe least impact students and most impact the health of the district, we came up with a number of around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to reduce for fiscal year 21. And inside of this budget includes all the settlements that have been approved prior to night, the the teacher's contract, as well as putting in settlements that were anticipated to be approved tonight, all the support contracts. So the funds would be there for that approval to take place later on this evening. But we're still able to get with putting those in and putting a slight increase into what we probably would see for utilities and fuel, just as a cost of living sort of adjustment. And putting into what we put in that L T F M plan and talk through admin meetings of what are our needs for launcher facilities and operating capital, putting those items in. And with what the what-if statement is or the what-if spreadsheet for finding revenue from M D E has currently, we end up with a budget that comes pretty close to what we had kind of gone through in projecting and reducing to get to where we were at. So that difference of three seventy-five would show the reductions that were made, including the additions that were made as a part of that reduction. And then the revenues that we're showing so far. So that gets us to our three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar difference in the general fund. And again, if you take out the gears and the Essers Fund, about nine and a half percent total fund balance. Food service, again, both food service and community ed are going to start with that negative number that was shown at the end of the revised budget fiscal year 20. So again, the projected audit total for here is not going to be precise. We don't like to see negative there, but we're looking at what are the differences? And looking at revenues over expenditure of both food service and community fund. Debt service, again, that's set up as a, what are our needs? The county and the government sets up our levy, and we receive those funds. So to see a negative difference there is not alarming. Just means that we've collected enough and we have a debt excess that will be dispersed over our levy and given back to taxpayers, or at least reduce the amount of tax that taxpayers will see on our statements next year. The final two to take into account are the OPEB Trust and the OPEB Debt Service. Ten years ago, we were able to out for a debt service bond. We bought it for a million dollars with the anticipation of taking a hundred thousand from that each year to help offset other post-employment retirement benefits. That ends now, and we won't have that into fiscal year 21. So we won't have the trust account or the debt service account for that. But we are able, because there's a sunset clause in the teacher's contract with post-employment benefits to levy for that cost. It doesn't end up being the hundred thousand dollars equalized throughout the number of years. It's more based on the actual cost. What we spend in a prior year is what we get back going forward in a levy. But that's built into this budget as well. But it will clean up the number of funds that you'll see going forward until we were able to do something, maybe like a building construction project, then you'll see another fund come in. But so what I've got here is the revised budget in the middle is our final revise that you approved just in the previous item. At the top is the preliminary budget for fiscal year 21. And again, then you'll have the differences down on the bottom of what those changes are. Same deal as the prior discussion with the fiscal year 20. There's a ton of information and decisions and choices that go into finally melting down into just the by fund summary. So if there are questions either right now or that you come up with that you want for clarification, whether it's email or a call, feel free to do so, but I can definitely try to answer what you would have tonight.
Questions for Josh? If not, I would look for approval of the fiscal year 21 prelim budget. We need a motion for that.
I'll move to approve one.
Thank you. Bill on the motion? Second?
I'll second. Oh, sorry. You can take Larry on that.
All right. It was a close race. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be the acceptance of the preliminary budget. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. That passes by a six-zero vote. Thank you. That was information overload almost, Josh. Thank you for all. Number six, consideration to approve the 2021 property and work comp insurance renewal.
This is basically what the agenda item is, is the renewal for our property and work comp insurance renewal. And I do recommend that we approve it.
What are you telling us here? There was only one Hannover was the only one, or Ram is on here as well?
So I had to explain a little bit. You're probably a little tired of of me now, but.
Property is Marsh McLennan. Go ahead, Josh.
So they, basically, we are agent is Freeburg Insurance, and they go out and request renewal quotes for us. And there aren't a whole lot of players in the market for school district insurance currently. So we we have here our Hannover, who we've been with through Freeburg for the last several years, as well as for the property insurance, and then Ram Mutual for the the work comp. The one thing that you're going to have to make a decision on, I guess, is the cyber insurance, and they're both the same company. But one offers an additional premium, which is for, it's called crypto jacking. And I'm not technically advanced enough to understand what goes on there, but a lot of times, school districts are at the They'll attack the payroll side of the technology, the ACH returns and be able to. You know, pull funds from districts or even employees. Crypto jacking and stealing those funds. That extra $500 in that premium would go to cover anything that would happen there. In terms of prior year data, you've got the quote information from last year's quote and we end up actually paying. The differences usually end up being if we had a vehicle, last year we purchased the operations maintenance truck, we had a couple of buses, so there's some plus minuses there. As well as, you know, you're kind of at. A pretty good guess estimate of what your work comp is going to cost, but that's based on claims throughout the year, so there's some adjustments that happen there and the way. The quote for 20 is a little different than the actual for 20. We would expect to see probably something similar for fiscal year 21, so. It says renewal information, the one question would be, do you want to look at the extra $500 for the crypto jacking? Within the cyber insurance or stick with what we've had in the past for cyber insurance?
A little past me, is there any, anybody that's got any input on the cyber? Actually, board member or not, we could use anybody's input, I guess. So. Hanovers are bitter for the property and related things, RAM is our work comp person. Then Martian McLennan is handling our cyber, if we choose to go cyber, correct?
We had cyber in the past, it's a matter of if we want to go regular cyber or add the crypto jacking coverage.
You got any feel for crypto jacking?
Like I said, I'm not advanced enough, I know that. Biggest issues that people have are going to be in cybersecurity and their data being. Into or taken, I would assume that most of our providers, smart finance, infinite campus, our credit card companies have coverage. For these items. But for $500, I don't know if it's worth the risk of losing a payroll to crypto jacket and sure we get it back through the Department of Revenue, but. It might be some relatively inexpensive security, I guess.
For 500 bucks, you're right. Okay, I would look for a motion to approve the 2021 property work comp insurance renewal as shown. And just, you can amend that to include the crypto jacking.
I'll make a motion to approve it with the crypto jacking.
Okay, Brenda on the motion? Second?
I'll second.
Katie on the second? Other discussion? A yes vote would be the acceptance of. Insurance as shown. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six zero vote. Number seven, consideration to approve the 2022 bus personnel management and route activity scheduling proposal. Jeff?
Yes, advertisements went out for quotes on this and we received one quote from Safe Link. Transportation and I'm recommending approving this at the base percentage shown. At 2.52 and 3.16. For each year.
So procedurally, are we required? I don't remember us going out for bids in the past or proposals or whatever you'd like to call them, is that something that we do?
I guess I've always thought it was a good practice to at least attempt to get some competitive bids to show.
The one issue we always would have with, with them is this is kind of a very unusual contract, it's personnel only, right?
Yep.
So we subcontract this through Safe Link for just the personnel. We did this a number of years ago, I remember, and there was not a lot of competition to just accept this facet of it. Would that be?
Yeah, being my first, or I don't know if Josh remembers, but being my first year here, I could see that definitely.
Yep. It is a very unusual contract.
You'll find very few, if any, districts that have this sort of hybrid contracting, it's either totally. Farmed out to an organization that provides transportation or it's totally in-house, it's one or the other.
Okay, so we're looking for approval of the 2022 bus personnel and management route activity scheduling proposal. Does anyone like to make a motion in that direction?
I've got a question, so is this something in the past that we did as a cost savings? Or why did we go to this? Because to me, it doesn't seem like it's much of a cost savings if we're paying that much just to manage people.
I think there was a, back in the day, there was actually twofold. One of them was cost savings and the other one was there was an inordinate amount of. Activity that draws the superintendent in as the. As the spokesperson, I guess, for transportation. And it got to be so much that it was taking time away from the superintendent's job. And are we paying him to be the transportation coordinator? Or to manage our whole school system, so it seemed like the prudent idea about the time. About that time to just take that very labor intensive job. So that's, that's kind of a brief history of it. So it, it kind of was, how do we manage our superintendent if he spends a lot of time with just one facet of his job and that would be transportation?
And the other thing was when the ACA, the Obamacare.
I was going to say the ACA as well for the number of employees that were on our rosters was probably another driving factor.
Okay. Larry, does that, someone answer it?
Yeah, I'm just having a hard time looking at the numbers and saying we can hire somebody just to manage it versus a. A firm and paying, paying the drivers themselves, but I don't know all the details going into it.
I don't remember the ACA contract, but Lori is nodding like it was very much a factor in all of this.
Right, offering the health insurance and that staff, there were a lot of those staff who did not want to be forced to take our insurance. And that was another part of it, so it became a great opportunity. He also does all the plumbing for us. And I think he has that listed in the contract. In addition to just the personnel, washing all the buses, following the labs. And he is the DOT certified inspector as well.
Yep.
So we can get some.
Did anybody hear Lori's? Lori's answers or Lori's perspective on that?
I couldn't hear it.
I can hear a little bit.
So sometimes we, you know, it may, it may cost us more, but in the long run, are we being more efficient by this? You know, when we, when we speak of transportation, many, many years ago, we'd have four or five bus contracts that we would, people would submit to us for purchase. And. In the past, it was, it was at least discussed that if we buy the least expensive bus. Then historically, we have the most cost in transportation repair. And I think we've been doing Bluebird or Thomas for a number of years who were, who were probably at the upper level of a bus quality. So initially, do you spend less for a bus and think you get a good deal, knowing that there could be more, more issues down the road? So. Sometimes you just spend a bit more for the convenience of having somebody to take a lot of that off our back, we don't have any. Wage issues or anything like that, that's all handled through Safe Link, so, and any benefits that are afforded us.
But hiring, the advertising and working with the staff who want to go south for the winter, we don't, don't do that.
There's just nothing like scrambling to find drivers in-house if, if somebody can't make it in the 11th hour. And that's, that's really one of the other Safe Link positive things is we don't scramble. And take up staff time looking for subs and especially if you ever see our sub list, which is a very, very light. We pass on that problem to someone else. What would you like to do, folks?
It seems like this hybrid situation has been working out pretty well since we've been doing it. Or is there any information otherwise on that or?
No, I guess in the year that I have been here, maybe Josh and Lori or somebody else can speak that has dealt with it over the years, but it's, it was very smooth and Andy and his team does a great, good job. Especially with all the issues that could come up on a day to day basis.
I have, I have a quick question, so this, the base cost is for. 10 routes in the morning and 10 routes in the afternoon, are we tied into paying that? Say we don't go backwards, say we're doing distance learning in September, are we going to be paying that regardless? And then if we end up having to do more because we have to socially distance on the buses. Are we going to have to increase the number of routes and then will this price go up?
I'm guessing if we had to increase routes, no matter how we slice the pie, we're going to have to end up paying more and that's going to be one of the issues with some of those options that the governor is laying out in front of us. Is we're going to be spending more dollars somewhere somehow with the hybrid option and even with coming back to school full time with a lot of the. Requirements that we have, and so we're going to have to be budgeting our dollars differently than what we have in the past. And if we're not, you know, using the buses, I don't know what the requirements are going to be from the governor because. Right away, when we went into social distancing, they told us to honor our contracts and honor our. Our employee payments that we have to make. So. You know, if we, if we do, if we don't do routes anymore, you know, maybe that's a conversation that we have with Safe Link, if you guys approve them tonight.
So we would approve the contract knowing that it might change or is it possible to? We get the guidance at the end of July, is it possible to wait to sign this? I mean, do we have transportation that's happening during the summer right now that we would need to be under contract?
Nope, no transportation right now. I, I guess if you guys want to wait, the guidance is going to come out the week of July 27 and we have a board meeting on the 27th, so. I don't know if we're going to know anything by that night. To either approve or not approve or, you know, do some sort of modification depending on what the guidance says. But it's my understanding that we could be in all three phases of. Those plans at some point throughout the year, either in distance learning, a hybrid and or full time, depending on. Where COVID takes us, I guess, is the best statement to say. And so, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I know, I was going to say. I guess I don't know what to say as far as where the, where COVID is going to take us and how to plan for this, other than the fact that we, if you want us to go back and. Talk to Safe Link about the possibility of having. An out, you know, if they're not, if we're not having school, you know, I suppose that could be a possibility as well, but it really depends on what the state tells us. Because if the state's going to be giving us funding like they were this past spring, they may expect us to be paying. You know, any of our employees and if we want to have transportation that starts and stops throughout the year, we're going to have to have some sort of a contract with somebody.
Yeah, I, I understand that, I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be worth, because I, I'm, I'm wondering if there's been a conversation with Andy or with Safe Link about. What things could potentially look like, just realize we don't have firm plans or firm guidance yet, but just the if this, then this kind of a. Conversation rather than approving a contract and signing a contract tonight without really knowing for sure what. The outcome is going to be, I mean, I don't want us to pay for stuff we're not going to get and I don't want them to get shortchanged. If they're agreeing to something that's less than what they end up doing.
Sure, we can, we can certainly go back and create some sort of language.
Like a contingency clause based on the funding or that we get, that we find out at the end of July.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, that ready for July, just so that it protects both parties maybe.
I think it's important to understand though that anything is going to be based upon the state guideline. And so like this, this spring, the state said, you know, pay your contracts and, you know, if we're not having school, they're probably going to come back and tell us. You know, if we're paying the contracts or not, so. I'm worried a little bit about the timing, can we have it? Ready for that board meeting if the guidance comes out that afternoon?
They're going to need to hire drivers, have, and have staff in place.
I'm wondering if it can't be more of just a general agreement, if what I, if I understand what Anna is talking about. More of a general agreement for both sides to protect both sides, is that kind of what you're thinking, Anna?
Yeah, and I mean, we have to put plans together for those three potential outcomes and I would think transportation would be part of that, so. A, a general idea of what we would do if this is what the guidance does, and like you said. There's a possibility that over the course of the next school year, we will be in all three phases at some point or another. So just a general idea of what our expectations are and, and needs for transportation and what. Safe Links needs and expectations are. Just feel like it's maybe a little premature to sign a contract because like you said, if we have contracts, we have to honor them, well. I don't know if that's. The right thing to do at this time when we don't really know what's going to happen next, we're in a position to modify a contract, we should take advantage of that.
So something along the lines of if, depending on what the, the guidance is, leave an opening for both parties to open the agreement. Based on situation?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're good guys to work with, I think they're pretty flexible, I think they'll understand the situation that we're in. I think it's worth a conversation at least to have some sense of what. Could potentially happen.
So through all of the conversation, what are we talking about here? Approving the contract with some caveats in there that we need to have further discussion with. With Andy about procedures? Or to lay it off until the day that it might get approved at a state level? Which is kind of scary that it all get pulled.
Yeah, I'd like to see us approve it with a contingency that we could. Maybe adjust the routes or whatever depending on guidance, state guidance. Or open it, open it up again, but. Not wait to approve it because it might get too late in the summer.
It would be good to have an approval here. And. I think, I think your plan, Brenda, is, is pretty sound. But at the same time, what would you like to do, team?
And I agree with what Anna's saying, that we, it would be good to make sure that we have a contingency built in. But not to wait until possibly August to. Finalize it.
I'd like to turn that into a, a motion. And if you would.
I'm sure I'll make a motion to approve the contract with a contingency plan, what? With a contingency plan or option or something like that, clause, I guess you'd say, however you want to word that, Jeff.
Brenda just made a motion to accept the contract with some discussion on contingency. I don't know else how to word that.
To comply with the, with the contingency clause to comply with the state guidance.
With the contingency clause to comply with the state guide.
Yeah, yeah, something around that.
Yeah.
I think you have to put a date on it then, if you're going to do that.
Okay.
I'm thinking if we say the state guidance, that would maybe encompass if it's a certain thing on July 28th and then November 6th, that's something else. And as we move forward, we would be always trying to stay in compliance with whatever the state guidelines are for that day, for that week.
It's true. It could be a moving target throughout the year.
As we move into various phases.
So the wording sounded okay, and it does, it does encompass what the state recommendations, rules, whatever they want to call it. So we have a motion on the floor for the approval of this bus personnel management contract with the contingencies that we just read.
I'll second.
Seconded by whom?
Anna.
Thank you, Anna. Other conversation?
I guess I would have some concern with Sandstrom, Andy, you know, with a moving target. You know, you could pull the rug out before we're setting this up as, you know, you, we tell you, you know, day-to-day, which really was what was happening with guidance. So I, I get where you're coming from, but I don't want to be left holding the bag either. So I think we have to be careful, a little careful here. You know, Andy's been very good to the district, and I think, you know, we want to be upfront and honest with him too, so.
If there's any change, we'll bring it back in on July.
We'll have some immediate contact with Andy. On it, you know, all of these, all of these things are very logical outcomes here. Anna brought up something I wasn't even thinking about as far as the pandemic issue is the state guidelines. I guess we have to trust our contract holder on this and with the understanding that, you know, if it doesn't happen the way we want it, that's what a contract is. Soon, soon it will come up again and we'll go in a different direction, but none of us think that'll happen. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote on this right now, and that would be to approve the 2022 bus management, bus personnel management and the rest of that story. And there's contingencies, there are legalese there that we, we've written into this as far as contingencies. So a yes vote would be for that approval. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. Thank you, everyone. That was very good discussion. Consideration to approve the 2022 vehicle mechanic proposal. Someone handle that?
They, yeah, same, same concept. Recommend approving, and it's at those same percentage moving forward. The 2.52 and the 3.16. You guys want to do, you can certainly do something similar to what you just did, if you're feeling comfortable with that. Piece of it would be a recommendation as well.
I like that option. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but. For other bids, who we get? Sure, sure. Would anyone like to approve the vehicle mechanic proposal based on the same language that we have for the SafeLink?
I'll make that motion.
Anna on the motion?
I'll second.
Larry?
Yep.
I'm the second. So the wording on this proposal will be much the same as we have for the SafeLink itself. Keeping in mind the options that may be out there for us or the contingencies that may be out there. So a yes vote would be for that proposal approval of the mechanic. Bob? Yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six-zero vote. Consideration to approve the resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits for candidacy.
This is one of the first steps in initiating our election process for this coming fall. And so we need to set a resolution establishing those dates listed in the resolution for filing affidavits for candidacy for school board.
Procedural things?
Yes.
Okay, I would first look for a motion to approve establishing those dates based on this affidavit we're looking at.
So moved.
And that was, sorry, Anna, thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Katie, I'm the second. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of the.
Do I need to read it?
Yeah, you sure do.
Resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252, State of Minnesota, as follows. The period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the Office of School Board members of Independent School District Number 252 shall begin on July 28th, 2020, and shall close on August 11th, 2020. An affidavit of candidacy must be filed in the Office of School District Clerk and the $2 filing fee paid prior to 5:00 PM on August 11th, 2020. Do I need to consider, do I need to continue reading all of those, Lori?
No.
You're good.
I'm good? All right. So for voting, Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie? Yes. Bill?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six-zero vote. Thank you, Katie. Consideration to approve the 2022 non-teaching staff contracts. Jeff, before we get in too deep on this, you might have had some other areas that you, you did for prior school districts. The way, the way things have always gone here, right or wrong, is we will negotiate the educators, the custodians, sometimes the paras, but then we've left it up to the superintendent to get the other contracts finished for us. And in part because there's such a logistical thing for scheduling to get us all in the same room for all of these contracts. Have you done this in the past?
Very similar to what we, what we do here.
So.
This isn't out of the ordinary.
Okay. So consideration to approve the 2022 non-teaching staff contracts. You have a list of them, page 63 in your packet. And we're also adding the secretarial and is it the office support contract?
Yeah, I think Lori already added onto this Google Doc here, since we made that motion and approved it. She's added the secretaries and the office support piece.
Okay. So questions? Jeff, these follow the educators' contract numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the idea and philosophy going into it.
Sure. Okay, I would look for a motion to approve, and then we can always make some discussion after the motion and second if you choose.
Make a motion to approve?
Brenda on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the approval of these contracts as they're shown. A yes vote would be for acceptance of the contracts. Bob? Yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six-zero vote. Hey, look.
I'd like to say thanks to everyone involved in the negotiations on the contracts, because I know that was a lot of work and a lot of cooperation went into that.
Thank you. Hey, look, everybody, we haven't got anything left here, I think. I would just like to plug in one time, we had everyone from the educators to our non-teaching staff. We were all having ulcers reaching graduation and what it was going to look like and how we'd be impacted by it as a district. And now that we've got through it, I would just like some comments from maybe our principal, our high school principal, and, and our superintendent, is how the actual process for graduation went. Tim?
Well, before we started, I had hair and now I have none. If that helps understand what that process was like. I'd just like to start by thanking some people. You know, the work that Deb Clegan and Kirsten Hoffman put into graduation every year just can't be underst, or overstated enough. And, you know, thank you very much to them. It was a big departure from what the normal ceremony looks like. But they, they did a great job of helping out with that. Likewise, I'd like to thank Dorothy O'Reilly. She was the driving force behind putting the, the video presentation together. The, all of the video presentations for, that were shown at the, at the ceremony. And likewise, Jim at Event Sound and Lighting was very helpful when we called him last minute and said, hey, you know, do we have everything we need? He made some good suggestions that I helped, that I think really helped out. Dave Peterson and his custodians did a great job of helping manage all the cars coming into the parking lot and getting everybody lined up. I'd like to thank all the staff that was able to turn out and to cheer on our graduates as they went through. I think that was a pretty neat thing. You know, normally we, we shake their hands as we're going into the field house, but this was kind of cool seeing signs and pom pons and lots of cheering and, and congratulations that way. So it was really neat. It, you know, there were some things that technologically we barely were able to pull off. I'm not exaggerating when I say that the slideshow that we, that we did with the videos of the graduates, we literally do not have a copy of it because I couldn't save a copy on my laptop. So when we got that finished, we carefully walked it out to the parking lot and they hooked it up. And that was the last time that anybody's seen that, that whole video presentation. And we just had some things that were unexpectedly came up that that, you know, we, we didn't realize were going to be problems. Big thanks to Mike Gesme also for figuring out how to stream the event on YouTube and Facebook. That was a touch and go kind of thing too, because, you know, we don't get good wifi in our student parking lot. Not something that we normally think about, but when you have a, when you have a parking lot graduation ceremony, it becomes a lot more important deal. So Jeff and I spent hours, you know, hours and hours mulling over different ideas and what can we do? And, and, you know, how can we honor our graduates and still have something that meets the state's guidelines? And I really appreciate his help when we were going through all that, because it was really, it was a team effort to make all that happen. So I, I've heard really nothing but positives from parents. They really liked the way the ceremony came off. They, they felt like it was a really neat deal. And, and also a big thank you to Eric Meck for organizing the parade after the graduation ceremony. I know that was a pretty popular part of things too, and that was basically all his doing. So, so yeah, we did it. I kind of hope that we don't ever have a situation where we have to do a graduation ceremony like that again. I'm all for having everything really well planned out and having things be no issues. So that's what I've got my fingers crossed for, for this upcoming school year.
Yep. Thank you, Tim. Jeff, anything for it?
No, I would echo a lot of what Tim said. Tim and his crew did an outstanding job of organizing and the support staff that were there and the, the teaching staff that were there, helping out that night. Where it was just phenomenal and it was good, good feelings, that whole process. Again, it's not something I wish to ever go through again, but if we have to, we know that we can. Yeah, it, it's just, it was a good collaborative team effort in all sorts of areas. Very impressed.
No.
And I've heard nothing but positive feedback out of it as well.
Yeah, I would commend everyone involved. It was really, really great. And I watched it on YouTube, and then I walked out to Minnesota Street for the parade. And it was just really celebratory atmosphere and very impressive. All the videos are fantastic. It was really, really well done.
Yep. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Thank you to.
I would agree. I, I, I have heard a lot of positive things from the community. And, you know, just got to thank the two of you and, and the rest of the staff for the amount of work and effort. I know there was a lot of comments from community going into it on how it was going to get done. And, you know, you worked with what you had, so thank you.
Yep. Okay, you can, you can see our upcoming informational items here. We're going to have another busy meeting coming up. So if you have anything that you'd like to add to this or any questions you have about the upcoming agenda, please contact Lori or Jeff and either get your addition on there or get your questions answered. At this time, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Larry?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. I'll do the discussion. All of them, oh, shoot.
No, no more discussion.
Like to adjourn. Larry?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. We are officially adjourned. Thank you for, thank you for your participation this evening. Thank you to everybody who is listening in. Have a good night.